Mayor Querom?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner Mabry?
Here.
Commissioner Fabia?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Please, Fabian, join us in the pleasure of this. Start out with public comments? Jackie, before you get started, Jackie, we're gonna have, you're gonna talk about the cemetery, Oakland Cemetery. Gary Johnson's in the back row, and I wanted to make, give Gary a public notice that you have been working up for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Public thank you. Gary has volunteered his time at Oakland Cemetery for how many years? Two years. He has repaired approximately 1,400 tombstones. He has done this on his own, he's expended his own funds, he actually has a couple of people working for him, and, you know, he is, he is out there all the time, has done an outstanding job, and he's out there, nobody sees him, nobody knows he's out there, but he's out there day after day, pretty much, working on the repair of the tombstones. So I wanted to say thank you. Jackie, we needed your name, and go for it.
Okay. Do I have it now?
Slide a little bit more toward you.
There.
There you go.
Better. I'm Jackie Davis, citizen of Princeton, and just by chance, Gary and I met, and were chatting about what we were doing in our retirement, after I got done smiling. And he told me about the cemetery work. I had lived in Hart Place for ten years, and had walked that cemetery probably 200 days a year for ten years, and had noticed the decline. Noticed that trees were not being trimmed, it just was not being maintained, as we would hope. I asked him if there was something I could do other than lift tombstones, and he asked me to come with him and talk to the city, and work on babysitting up a foundation. So that's how we got started. As you go out and drive through Oakland, it looks, it looks fine, you just kinda drive through, and then you start noticing, well, there's some stumps there, and there's some tree there that's kinda dead. For years, we had poison ivy that was probably about that white going up some of the trees. Anybody could really see it, but of course, if you're mowing, if you're maintaining, those are the things that, like those few pounds that creep up on you. Maybe you just don't notice them. So, we, we agreed something needed to be done, and Gary had already started work. So we started, we came, we've been talking to Rachel, and to Pete, and the city has made great strides, and we do wanna thank the city. Because if you notice, Rachel has given you an update on what the city has done. They've taken out trees, they have gotten rid of most of the poison ivy, but there is still a lot of work to be done there. Many trees, even if you drive through today, you can see there are many trees out there that are damaged, many trees where the limbs are unsafe. And at your place, I had put a packet, I didn't wanna do a presentation, but this is just kinda shows you what some of the problems out there are, and they're due to, basically, the problems with deferred maintenance at the, at the cemetery. The first picture here shows you family plot that Gary has restored. The rest of these are just showing you some deferred maintenance issues that are really critical. Tombstones tucked under steps of the office. Tombstones with family names quite, quite clear, put in the boneyard. And many of these problems were caused by recent storms, by the trees and limbs that have fallen on there. The city, it has a obligation to mow and keep that up, and to maintain, but once the stone is destroyed, the city had no funds, or no way to repair that apparently, because they sat there. Gary went out, noticed it, and started to go to work. And we understand that these problems can't be fixed overnight. It'll probably take two or three years of continual maintenance to get it up to where it should be, because we have to kinda play catch-up. More trees do need to come down. Now, Rachel has got the number of trees, I don't have those in my mind listed for you, but they need to come down, additional trees next spring. Of course, we have to have continued trimming of bushes, getting rid of all of the old mulberry trees that have grown up, the trees, the weed trees, and get started on that. What Gary and I have done, working with Rachel and Pete, is contacted the Star Rock Community Foundation Board, and they are a community foundation for the entire area, and they will help us set up a foundation for the continual preservation of the tombstones at Oakland Cemetery. Now, we understand there are two cemeteries. We, you know, we got, both of us have been out, we have walked Elmont, there are issues out there, but because of Oakland's age, and the number of people buried out there, the need there is the one we wanted to address first. We have many of our veterans out there that have never been, for some reason, they've never gotten their flags, the little badges that line the graves have been tossed aside or lost, fallen over, somebody hasn't gone back and done that. We have a veteran from 1812 who's buried in our cemetery. I also put a packet that Kent Lane has put together, or brochure, it's fascinating, gives you a short history of Oakland, shows you where some of the more prominent graves are. But I guess Gary and I look at it, those are the prominent ones, but the people who built Princeton, people who sat here and paid tax, people like my parents in my hometown, they deserve to have their graves respected and repaired. And that's what we hope to be able to continue. Because Gary has put out, for two years, he's had two guys building it out of his own pocket. The city has provided some gravel, but that's about all they've been able to do, so we'd like you to consider in your next budget, upping the amount for the cemetery upkeep, keep helping us do what we're trying to do, and let's get Oakland back to where we can be truly proud of that cemetery, because we'll have a history of it. Does anyone have any questions for me, for Gary?
Do we know how many are buried in Oakland? Do we have a number?
It's on the back of your pamphlet, and...
Fourteen, fourteen thousand?
Fourteen thousand, yeah. And something like, Gary, is it 1,200 veterans?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The last census was at 2,000 mine on the veterans, 959 at that time, so roughly right at 1,000.
That would've got two.
And if you're lucky, lucky, one third of them get on it, one third. And I just found the other veterans from 1812, so there's at least two of them.
So the Star Rock Foundation, Jackie, that's, you contacted them for private donations?
Yes. We will, we have paperwork, it's gonna be sent down to Rachel, we will be setting that up, and donations, we will solicit for donations. The foundation will be set up, so that goes for the maintenance and repair of tombstones, and that continued on. We hope to collect enough that we are able to keep this an ongoing thing.
The one thing that is important to mention, as far as, you know, is the Star Rock Foundation, but this is gonna be set up earmarked specifically for you. The money that is donated to Star Rock Foundation, as it's given, stays in Princeton?
In Princeton, yes, thank you, that needed to be clear. They are just going to be our fiscal agents. They're the people who have done all the paperwork to make sure that it's a tax deductible, the 501(c)(3), they have done all the paperwork, and they are our fiscal representatives. They have no decision on how that money will come out. We will have a board who will handle that.
Yeah, that'll be nice, if it's, they do all the work?
Yes, they do.
A board, they do all the work, and we'll have a seat at the board, but they'll have, they do all the work, and that is to be plus.
Yes, we didn't have to spend the six months, and the money to go through setting this all up for us. And so that has been, we're working with Sam Beckett from the Star Rock Foundation.
I'd like to say, Jackie and Gary, thank you very much for your efforts, and as the thought about the trees, the mature trees, or the dying trees need to be removed, what's the thoughts then about replacing with new trees? Would there be donations then, you mean, established for people to donate a tree? There would be a tree that could be planted in place of the trees that are taken down, because I'm sure it's gonna get moved, it's gonna be a little bare there, if you remove these whole trees.
As we, as we do. It has been my understanding that the cemetery already solicits for donations, and the new area of the cemetery, there are markers by the tree, this tree in memory of John Cusnell. So I would assume the city would maintain planting, and continue its planting, and doing that also 15 percent perpetual care. But we basically, this foundation would basically be looking at maintaining that thing, for maybe families who are no longer in the area, families who are in the area, how are you supposed to fix a grain marker?
So newer headstones that are there, Jackie, is the family, do they have any responsibility to maintain that headstone? Should something go wrong with it, or are we really talking about graves that are abandoned because of a family loss, because you're not particularly responsible?
There's family, and Rachel, you're gonna have to help me out on state law, I mean, I've sat through these meetings, and I'm not really able to speak, but the city, you know, you pay when you buy your plant, you're paying a set amount, and so much is set up for perpetual care. That amount goes for how the city decides to do it. It has not been used for perpetual care of tombstones, of grain markers. They have been left to the repair therein. Now, you say maybe a family's not nearby, but if the limb from a tree falls on your mother-in-law's, how are you supposed to put that up? At least with the foundation, we might be able to give you help, we would be able to certainly help pay for it, pay for it all, help you find the people to do it. Right now, there are many of those stones that are just sitting out there, and they were toppled because trees or limbs fell on them. You know, you can see the base is level, or maybe they were hit by them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Oh, you can just make it. Do we have any other public comments?
You may need, you may need, you may need the slide that lets switch toward you, make sure that I can do it.
And Alice, hold on, use your name.
Okay. That's okay. Alice, and I'm here about Elmont Cemetery. That is a disgrace. And I wanna thank Quinn, because he was very good, I spoke to him on a Thursday afternoon, he called me Thursday night, and I met him the next morning, he's out at the cemetery, and he walked the cemetery with me in the mist. Ray Mabry also, when I got ahold of him, he dropped what he was doing, and he went, "It's awful." And it was all the mowers. They have hit so many of these slade holders, they have not weeded. It's awful, isn't it awful? We found a grave, I heard that the corner is chipped off of it, is that from the mower? I'm thinking it was. This needs to be addressed.
This been going on the most...
At least this year, sure. And you know, a lot of people come, I went out from Homestead to trim around, and that grass was poor, it wasn't dead grass, it was live grass, and it took me forever to use my little clippers. And a lot of people come, when they come to Homestead, they all visit the cemetery. I was out here today, there was five other cars out there, that, they're visiting their graves, and it's, it's awful. And then, it's a flat cemetery where they should be able to, if they weedeed and weedeed down far enough, they would have to weedeed maybe once a month. Back far enough from the stone, you know, if the city can't afford it, then why don't you put out a call for volunteers? There's probably some retired men that would love to feel wanted. Does the city still have mowers?
Well, we do have, we have hired people to take care of the cemeteries.
Well, I know, but this last bunch was, I mean, I got pictures, but so much stuff, you know, so that's all I've got to say. Elmont needs work, too.
Yeah, admittedly, I don't get out to Elmont, I get to Oakland, but...
You stand there.
Exactly, but I have not, you know, admittedly, I have not been to Oakland.
But Quinn and I walked it, and he took a lot of pictures. I, Quinn's already relieved, I was going to drop you some.
Yeah, thank you, Alice, I think we spoke on the phone briefly on...
We did.
Friday, too, so I think you bring us from, from...
How do you, how do you find out who deserves the markers, are they...
Yeah, we have a cemetery selection, we have files on that, and so, and I think Jackie kind of brought us to thinking, that's one thing that we need to do a better job of, be part of with another veterans organization or something, to help us make sure that we're putting markers everywhere that they need to be, and that they stay there if they get um...
You know, too, I found markers on the grave, a lady's grave, she died in 58, and here's the military marker. There's one stuck in a vase, another lady. They've just, I told Quinn I walked today, and there was a marker laying in the grass, and I picked it up, and I couldn't, you should see how bent it is. I just laid it on the stone, so they wouldn't run it over. That's the mowers doing that.
Thank you, that's definitely something along with Oakland, and I appreciate you as bringing this to our attention, and I especially appreciate Gary and Jackie for taking time, and Gary gave me a nice long tour, as well as some of others on the city councils, who took time, a lot took time to give those tours and really show us, because like Jackie said, you can drive through and think it all looks nice, until you really go out there and see, you know, what's been neglected and what needs to happen, and it's not gonna happen over a year, but now that we know about this, hopefully in two to three years, we can get it back to where it needs to be. So thank you all.
It will be addressed, and then it will be taken care of.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll go to approval of minutes, go to Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor, I moved up the minutes from the regular council meeting on Monday, October 3rd, 2016, being approved as written. Motion's been seconded, any corrections? Call roll?
Commissioner Warren?
I would have stayed, I was not at that meeting.
Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom? Aye. We'll go to approval of invoices, and we'll start with Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. I have got invoices for public affairs, in the Department of the Council of Finances. Planning department, $7,810.12. Administration, $10,394.43. Salt insurance, $58,158.52. No expenses in economic development. Tourism, $134.66. Concrete department, $1,598.94. No expenses in community development. Lovejoy, $1,131.1. Tax increment financing, $203.50. Homestead, $100. The total invoices for public affairs in the Department of the Council of Finances is $79,531.18. Mayor, I've reviewed these bills, I find them to be true and accurate, and move to adjutant.
Motion's been seconded, any comments or corrections? Call roll? Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom? Aye. We'll go to Commissioner Mabry.
Thank you, Mayor Querom. This evening, I have the bills and payrolls for Department of Streets and Public Improvement as follows. The street department, a total of $113,849.70. Wastewater collection, $26,914.55. Wastewater treatment, $611.44. Wastewater administration, $87,486.26. The cemetery department, $4,722.36. And garbage expenditures, $11,396.27. For a grand total of $244,980.58. Mayor Querom, I will examine the bills and payroll, find them to be true and accurate, request payment if you may.
Second. Motion's been seconded, any comments or corrections? Call roll? Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom? Aye. We'll go to Commissioner Fabia.
Thank you, Mayor, I have the bill for public health, safety and substance. Police department, $59,686.56. Fire ambulance, $50,827.31. For a total of $110,513.87. I've reviewed these bills, I believe they're to be true and accurate, and I move adjutant.
Second. Motion's been seconded, any comments or corrections? Call roll? Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom? Aye. We'll go to Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. Tonight, I have the bills and payroll in Department of Public Utilities. Electric generation, total of $584,376.73. Electric distribution of $32,185.35. Electric administration of $15,917.77. Water treatment of $22,597.5. Water distribution of $932.96. And water administration of $290,278.76. For a grand total of $946,288.62. You have to examine these bills, if they're gonna be true, we will pay them.
I'll second that. Motion's been seconded, any comments or corrections? Call roll? Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom? Aye. Thank you, Commissioners, I'll go to regular business, and we'll start with Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor Querom. I have this building permit before for September. Residential, we have five new permits totaling $30,428,000. Commercial, we have one addition for $20,000. Loan permits for through September are $69,000, total value of $3.2 million, compared to a year ago of $11.4 million, two years ago of $3.29 million. So I have...
Thank you, Commissioner Newman, I'll go to Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. I've got the bid result for water treatment chemicals, for the hydrochloric acid, a little bit of the same chemical, chemical, $0.32 a pound. The CO2 was, air products, $116 a ton. And the liquid sodium perchlorate was Alexander chemical that's about 7.0 cents per gallon. We did not receive a bid for liquid calcium hydroxide, and the high-radiolane did not meet the bid specs, which I think Pete has nothing on that.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna rebid those two chemicals, and those bids will be open on November 3rd.
Okay, thank you. I believe we accept these bids that were submitted.
I'll second that. Motion's been seconded, any comments? Call roll? Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom? Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Warren, I'll go to Commissioner Mabry.
Thank you, Mayor Querom. This evening, we have resolution R-16-030, authorized the City of Princeton to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Princeton Art District. Before I make the motion on this, I'd like to have Rachel, if she could, just give us a overview of this.
Sure, so there's a picture attached, and this is something that the Art District has been working on more from BT here, if you have any questions specific to that. They raise funds, from what I understand, through their queef, or they program their 501(c)(3) organization, and they've raised some money, and they wanna put in this kiosk at the parking lot down there in North Main, and so this memorandum, memorandum of understanding would just allow them to use that space, and it goes into some further detail about what their rights would be, and then what ours would, so if you have any questions, let us know.
So, Rachel, they will be funding this project, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Well, I wanna say thank you to the North End Business District for doing that, that's a really nice-looking kiosk, and so we appreciate your investment in that corner.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure to make it happen.
It'll be a four-sided kiosk?
Yes.
You'll have control over two sides, correct?
Yes, and then the city, of course, will have two sides throughout the year. And we look to have a map in one, and a couple of other things we talked about is we wanna make sure the ads are all full-size, we don't want little post-it notes, you know, in the kiosk or anything, so all ads have to be, fit the full size of the kiosk.
That's great, great, I'll do. Is it a compartment with glass over the top, and the advertising underneath?
Right, with lighting above it, and it'll be changed, you know, monthly, and like Rachel said, posters will fit, won't be like little eight and a half by eleven, none of that.
Excellent, thank you.
With that said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution R-16-030.
Second. Motion's been seconded, any further comments? Call roll? Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom? Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Mabry, I'll go to Commissioner Fabia.
Thank you, Mayor, I have the statistics for September 2015 for Fucan. We have total calls, 526. Ambulance BMS related, 286. Fire related, 12. City utility, utility related, 86. Fire department, we have total calls of 164. Fires, 4. Rescue BMS, 149. Others, 11. For the police department, we have a total call responded to, 421. Miles patrol, 10,764. Service calls, calls handled, 134. Arrest and warning, 56. Accident handled, 22.
Thank you, Commissioner Fabia. Now we'll go to our cemetery work.
Okay, I just have a couple things. The first thing is I've asked, King Friday is submitting quarterly tourism reports on what they have been doing with the tourism org at the Chamber, so this is your first quarterly report, that's been included in your packet, it goes over advertising different main street concerts, they've had this year, as well as the grants applications, which have all been awarded, but the suns haven't been submitted to those different organizations yet. Some information about the Amtrak, the summer bus trips that came to town, as well as the partnership at the Storarian Convention, Visitor Zero. Just have any questions on that, let me know. The other thing, which Jackie's pretty much already covered, was the cemetery update. I just put together a brief update on some things we've done out there this year, but obviously, we have a lot of work out there, and a long way to go, so during the next budget process, we'll obviously look at what we need to budget out there to make sure we maintain, and try to keep up with some of the issues we have out there, especially in regards to the trees and the stormwater drainage out there. So, the other stuff in the cemetery update, we do have a treasury, treasury bond that is a Jones, and it actually just matured, it was a 30-year bond, so that money is currently just sitting in the money market prior, or we've always taken interest on that, but it's always been $100,000 of interest that we've seen annually from that. So going forward, as Jackie kinda touched on, state statute requires 15 percent of every lot sale to go towards perpetual care, so we'll be contributing to that $100,000 at the end of each year, and then investing in, just taking the interest like we've done in the past. The other thing is we have the Summers Trust, which has always been there as well, the only money that's been taken out for that is to do repairs to the Summers Chapel, and currently, there's about $8,000 now, there's in that, but that can only be used to repair the chapel out at Oakland. So, that's all I have on that, and the last thing I have, so the auditors are, I actually, just before I came up here, got the final copy of our national financial report of the audit, so that will be submitted in the next week or so to the council and the public, and then they are gonna come present the second meeting in November to go over that. So I just wanted to give an update, but that has to be submitted to the state council already at the end of the month, so we will have it submitted by then.
Any comments? Rachel, do you know on the 30-year treasury, we have to reinvest that 30-year treasury?
We do not, and we were making seven-quarter interest, so it was a really good, we don't find that stuff anymore, so right now, like I said, it just matured, so we haven't made any plans on what we're gonna do, but obviously, we're not getting that type of interest very, unfortunately, anymore, so it was a pretty good deal.
I'm assuming we can't invest it in the stock market, such as that, there are probably restrictions where we can invest it.
Yeah, it's still investigating all that, but I'll find out, let me know.
Any further comments? The mayor comments, I have, I wanna talk a little bit about economic development. This past Thursday, the Main Street Revitalization Steering Committee held the first of three Community Vision workshops.
Eighty-one people attended, attended in what was a very successful discussion intertwined with presentations and projects, all geared toward the future of our Main Street. On Thursday, I asked the group what we should expect from this ongoing project. My vision, and my vision is just one of many, the vision's up here, and the vision's out there, my vision is multi-faced, facetious. First, to make Princeton not just a destination, it already is a destination, but one that tourists mark on their calendars. A destination people return to time and again. We have the landmarks, but landmarks are only a portion of what makes a community desirable to visit. We want our Main Street and our city parks and parking lots from I-80 through the Courthouse Square to be visually appealing. We want to assist and support current businesses and future entrepreneurs by providing a Main Street environment that pulls tourists to Princeton. And that includes promoting our historical past and highlighting architectural treasures along Main Street that many are unaware of. And as many already know, we are getting started this fall nineteen trees we plant along South Main, and the parking lot located at the corner of Elm Lane is undergoing a landscape transformation also to be completed this fall, and that will include the kiosk. All this is geared towards making Princeton's Main Street the best it can be, but it's also geared toward economic development. What we do today on Main Street will get us a leg up on communities throughout the state in bringing business and industry to town. Our location in the state, our proximity to the business highway in the country, the services we provide in our main street are, in my opinion, our greatest assets. That said, the city is currently positioning itself to aggressively market our city-owned properties, our industrial park and our tech park primarily, and by extension, our I-80 corridor and Main Street to outside businesses and industry to make sense in their home or as part of expansions. Twenty-seventeen will be the year when economic development joins our Main Street project at the forefront of our development priorities. We have a working economic development game plan of what we're going to do, but without what the Main Street Steering Committee Group is currently doing, our chances at success are greatly diminished. And that's because successful economic development begins and ends with Main Street. It's a quality of life issue, and it's about how do we get from here to there. I've said many times before that there's a lot going on in Princeton, and we have momentum. None of this is less true today than it was a year ago, in fact, it's more so today than any time in the past. We cannot go backward and resume the way it was, to do so would become unproductive, and much would be lost. The only way to travel forward is to do so with conviction, and doing so will be successful.
Anything else on that?
Well, I want to add a little bit to that, I'm really happy that the city engaged in a new agreement with Liam Associates, which is a commercial broker, brokerage firm in Chicago, to help us market the tech park and the logistics park. I'm also happy to participate in council members, I'm a city manager, visiting with some of our larger employers in town, making sure that they are on board and happy with the services that they receive from the city, and also encouraging them to talk to their suppliers and tell them the Princeton story, and see if maybe if they've got suppliers that are, maybe have distance away, maybe convince them that it might be a good time to look at branch locations here in Princeton. So, I'm happy that we've got all these initiatives going, I think they're all going to come together, and it's just an exciting time to be here.
Okay, do we have any old business?
I might just mention one thing, since I didn't get an opportunity to get a memo for Bob to read, but I'll just reiterate the request for bids on the wastewater, or the water treatment chemicals, of liquid calcium hydroxide and hydrated lime. Those bids will be, need to be received to City Hall, City Clerk's office, at Two South Main Street, Princeton, Illinois, by one P.M. on Thursday, November third, with the bid opening on Thursday, November third, one thirty P.M. The envelope with the bid should be clearly marked, "Chemical Bid," and like I said, we'll receive those through one P.M. on November third.
Thank you Pete, any other old business?
I could, Mayor, I'd like to just delve down a little bit, I could hear, under old business, you this is about the cemetery, we'll play that in there.
Whatever you want.
Okay, let's go to the old business. In many ways, I'm down here remaining silent, and we're very optimistic with what we've got going on. We have a new street superintendent, Quinn Querom. Quinn, like Rachel, has inherited a few challenges, and sometimes the mindset is that the cemeteries are stepchildren, and they shouldn't be that way, I mean, they kind of end up getting the leftovers of the leftovers. I've been on the council for three and a half years now, and this is actually, I'm commissioner over streets, sewers, recycling, garbage, and cemeteries, and I've spent a lot of time in the cemeteries as well, and I know one of the things that I've been concerned about is how people are buried, and I know that the grave site, when the cemetery, when the funeral's over, and how the grave is filled in, and how it should look when it's all done, and it should present itself as a finished product, and it should look like the bodies at rest, and the grave sites at rest. Rachel's kind enough to come out to Elm Lawn about three weeks ago, we had a little meeting out there, we took our lunch here, we sat there, we talked for about forty-five minutes about the cemeteries, and I appreciated that Rachel, we had a good heart-to-heart on the ground, so to speak, and we discussed the idea about moving forward in two thousand and seventeen with some additional equipment for the street department to be able to make sure the burial sites look good from day one, you know, weather permitting. So I appreciate your effort in working with us on that too. And as we talked about, as the trees, the old trees, the tour trees are removed, we need to be looking at an aggressive tree program that gets new trees back to place. So, that's my comment.
Thank you Commissioner Mabry. Any other old business, or any new business?
I'm going to ask Justin Walker, their fleet mechanic, to come on up and talk about something that we tend to be talking about before the end of the month, on whether or not we can move forward with a potential new opportunity on a new tannim axle. So I'm going to, I can, thank you.
The street department has a nineteen ninety-nine tandem axle dump truck. About three years ago, I believe, it was plowing on Golden Road, and it hit a manhole, and it bent the frame, we did have the truck repaired and put back into service, but as a lot of you might know, when you bend something, they never seem to be right, when, you know, in the later years. What's going on is, the truck's got some issues, it's had, you know, brake issues, and I know the transmission's causing me some grief, but the reason I'm coming to you, I know, you know, replacing that truck, if you replace it with a new one, it would probably be anywhere from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The other day, it, I saw an ad for a sealed bid tandem axle dump truck, and it just happened to be Putnam County. I spoke with Rachel about it, and then I went over and looked at it. What it is, is Putnam County has, I think, six tandem axle trucks. This particular truck that they're doing a sealed bid auction for is a two thousand seven, it has approximately forty-nine thousand miles on it. After looking the truck over with one of the gentlemen from the street department, I think it's a pretty good truck. What I'm thinking is, is the ninety-nine's probably getting to a point where it's going to start costing us a lot of money. I know that right now, a big ticket item like a tandem axle dump truck's a little tough to swallow, but after looking at this truck, I did talk to him about their maintenance records, and I also spoke to him, you know, what issues they'd had with it, and he said they had had some electrical issues, taillight wiring and stuff, which is nothing that I can't handle. The truck was clean, it's already red, it's got a good dump box on it, and it's set up for the plow that we have already. To make a long story short, I do believe if we did, were able to make a bid for this truck, and I've been speaking with Rachel about a number, but obviously, we don't want to talk about a sealed bid number, but I'm sure she can speak with you about that. If we could buy this truck right, it might last us a good, you know, ten years, I will believe. I know buying a used vehicle's a risk, but if we could buy this right, I believe it's in good shape, it ran well, it shifted well, and I just think it would be a good answer for us right now in the short term, especially if we could buy it for a decent price. I did look at some comparables, and I kind of, it ran quite wide, but anywhere from forty-five thousand dollars for something that was a little older, and had probably fifteen, twenty thousand more miles, to up to seventy-five thousand. So, like I said, I spoke with Rachel about numbers, and I can elaborate more with you later, but I believe it would be a good answer for taking care of the street department's needs for a tandem axle for the foreseeable future, and save us from spending a large amount of money right now.
What would the cost, I'm just curious, the cost of a new tannim?
About a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand. I did check on the tandem axle, and it's not a cheap proposition.
How much value of what we have now, if it was to be sold?
I would, right off the top, in the condition it is, I would say twenty to twenty-five. So I, and obviously, and I spoke with Quinn about this, if we did get this truck, he wouldn't have any problem with us selling, you know, putting the other out, but it does have value, it just has a lot of issues, and I'm afraid eventually that it's going to start costing us as much as we would bid for this truck. The other thing is, it's a, this truck is a two thousand seven, so it's a, not to get too overly complicated, it's before they went into heavy-duty emission systems, nowadays they have, while the costs associated with the heavy-duty emissions the EPA's instituted, is getting rather expensive, so this one is new enough, but old enough, and I think it would be a good for us.
Justin, when is the deadline for the sealed bid?
It is, I believe it's thirty-first.
And first, obviously Quinn's on board, this is something that he thinks is a good, and it comes out of his budget, I think he is, we need to proceed with putting a bid in, with Rachel and Quinn working, and with Justin on a number, because it's going to come out of Quinn's budget anyway, whether it be for this year or next year, we're going to rent some of the money for it, I just think it's a prudent investment, especially Rachel, if you feel good about it, you know, you know the numbers for which you're fighting every day trying to make payroll and things like that.
Is this an international?
Yes, it is.
Got Allison Auto Money?
Yes.
Does it have maintenance records, how much money has it spent on, do you know?
As far as the engine and transm, well, the drive train, he said he hasn't had any trouble with it. We spoke, I did not look at his service records, although he assured me that he did have up-to-date service records on the vehicle.
Does it have international engine, or is that a company?
It has a DT forty-six, four sixty-six international engine, but it's the pre-emission, before they got into the new exhaust, yeah, you know.
Exhaust fluid, yeah.
Yes, you understand. I believe it's a good example, I believe it would be something that would save us money in the long run. And I do know that it is an expense we wouldn't be expecting, but if we could find a way to purchase this, I think it'd be a good opportunity for us, save us money in the long run.
Is forty-nine thousand relatively low mileage?
Yes, oh yes. Yes, often, if you look at the truck papers, you can see anywhere from a hundred, a hundred and seventy-five thousand isn't uncommon, so forty-nine thousand really is relatively low mileage.
And Justin, the reason they want to get new stuff, it's just a simple fact, it's the electrical.
It had some electrical issues, which, for my, yeah, the issues they had with it, when he told me, it was rear lighting, taillight lighting, you know, warning lights, that's all stuff that I can handle in-house, that's not a problem at all. My main concern was that the engine and transmission and the drive train were clean, dry, and ran properly, and they do, and he attested to that. As with anything, it's a gamble, but I feel comfortable with the vehicle.
Do you take it around a lot?
I didn't get to drive it much, but I will before we do submit something.
Any other, any more comments? Well, I agree with Commissioner Mabry. Great job.
I think Justin and Quinn and I just have to, obviously, we need, like, research to make sure in the long term it would be a better investment than purchasing a new one, but we have to get all that figured out, and then if you feel comfortable with it.
Or just going forward with the one we have, taking a chance on that.
I will say, I do know the transmission's shifting oddly in fourth gear, and I believe it might be a rebuild or a replacement, and something like that can cost upwards of six thousand dollars. So, you know, right off the bat, I know that is something that's coming with the one we have.
And mileage on what we have is?
I believe it's eighty-five or ninety thousand. Gets a lot of short trips, a lot of hours.
But it's certainly a little old, isn't it?
Yes, yes, yes. And unfortunately, if it had, we wouldn't have had the accident with the manhole, and that was an unforeseen thing, it happens when you're plumbing, I plow it from time to time, and sometimes it just come up and bite you, so.
You're good? Commissioner Mabry, do you have one? You're good? Can I hear your comment? Thank you Justin.
Thank you.
Any additional new business? Any public comment?
I'll stand here, where I'm close to a chair, named Gary Johnson, Open Cemetery. My concern is, is that Quinn has the money to continue taking trees down this fall, and in the spring, when the ground falls. I cannot elaborate enough how bad it is out there, those who took the tour with me saw some of them, how many hollow trees are out there, ten to fifteen that were hit by lightning years ago, they're pretty much dead, they're hollow, how many limbs need to be pruned that are bigger around than my voice, I'm sure I've never been allowed to grow like that. The question really is, is it how many trees there are to be done? There's approximately fifty that need to come down. We've gotten sixteen so far. The real question is, when they fall, because we didn't do it, how many headstones do they have? How many do they destroy? That's, you can't replace them.
Well, we'll get out there, and, you know, we'll get as many as we can, and, you know, highlight obviously the more severe trees that need to be dealt with, but, you know, we'll get her done.
I know Quinn, well, if he's out there, he'll do it, right Quinn?
Sure.
He's been a, he's been a real asset, and he makes me smile.
That's pretty rare, too.
But that's what we need to do. If we work as a team, we can get this all done in two years. So far, it's been I. There's no I in team, and there's no team in I. We need to turn it around.
Yeah, we'll get her done, we'll get, we know what the issues are, and we'll get it done.
I would appreciate that.
Hey Gary, any additional public comment? Okay, I will entertain the motion to return to I-8. I hope that we adjourn the next regular meeting on Monday, November seventh, two thousand sixteen, seven P.M. Mayor has the call. Motion seconded, Corral.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye, he is needing his adjournment.